Hi, it is just 6:30 and I just want to take a roll call of the committee. Jim Belfance?
Here.
Pam Boudreau?
Here.
Neil Holden?
Here.
Diane Rose?
Here.
Steve Schatz?
I'm here.
And Bill Vogt?
Here.
And also we have from the town Roxanne McCaffrey, Patrick White, and Michael Canales. Okay, we will call the meeting to order at 6:30. And just for the benefit of those folks who have joined the meeting that are not part of the town or the committee, I'm Jay Bykowsky, the Chair of the Finance Committee, and we have just introduced all of our members, our seven members, and several of them will be participating in the meeting. I'd like also to offer my congratulations again to the newly elected officers of the town and also to Roxanne McCaffrey, who is now Chair of the Select Board. A special thanks is due to Michael Canales and the Department Heads for their truly commendable fiscal discipline and compliance with the existing budgets and the development of our new FY22 budget. Before we actually get into the town meeting and what the town meeting is, we have two matters of business to address. The first would be approval of the Finance Committee minutes of May 19. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
May I have a second?
My second.
Any discussion, comments, or thoughts?
I read them.
There being none, I will take a roll call vote, please. Jim Belfance?
Yes.
Pam Boudreau?
Yes.
Neil Holden?
Yes.
Diane Rose?
Yes.
Steve Schatz?
Yes.
And Bill Vogt. Bill?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Next, we will, we have a matter that we do need to address. At our last meeting, we approved based on, we recommended based on the approval of the Select Board, Article 27, which basically deals with the ice glen and treatment of the ash trees there. And what we approved was $30,000 for that purpose. Now, before we go through all the articles, a request is made to increase that amount to 70,000. Michael Canales, do you have any comments relative to that?
Yeah, last week during the Forestry and Agricultural Meeting, we had our consultant in who distributed his report and included in there was how many, how much in circumference of trees we would have to treat in order to do what was proposed. Based on that amount, we would need 70,000 instead of 30,000. So the Forest Agricultural Committee recommended that that number move forward. The Select Board then met, and the Select Board also approved placing 70,000 to the warrant and then closed the warrant, which brings us to tonight.
We need to, this is a recommendation that has to be supported, has to be brought before the Finance Committee. Can we have a motion, please, to approve?
So moved.
And a second? I'll make the second. Any discussion from the Finance Committee?
I have a question, if I may.
Please.
Since this has been increased in the amount, and Michael just said it had to do with the circumference of all the trees, so I would assume that's an increased number. My question would be, does this amount of money, the whole 70,000, encompass a period of time, one year? Or there was no explanation of how this moves forward with regard to the spending of that amount of money?
Michael, can you comment on that, please?
Yes, and then I would also ask Patrick White if I, if there's anything I need correcting on, please, Patrick, jump in because he's worked closely with our consultant Ken. So at the time we placed the 30,000, it was a placeholder, just an estimate. Once the consultant went out and actually did the GPS mapping and identifications of trees that were actually in danger, we came up with 150 trees, and he then had a circumference for each tree, which then led to us being able to refine the estimate to actually treat. This gives us the option to treat everything that was identified. The initial 30,000 was a best guess at the time and was more of a placeholder, while this is actually the amount that would be needed if we were to move forward with treatment.
And let me just add to that. This amount, the increased amount actually allows us to treat the trees that are considered at risk this year. The consultant identified the former Mass Department of, you know, the Conservation and Forestry Guide, now runs the USDA Entomology, which is the bug group, and he believes that we can get federal money starting next year for the ongoing treatment expense. It's just that the deadline is October, so we weren't able to apply for the treatments we need to do this year. So what we're hoping is that the town will only be on the hook for the initial rescue treatments and that in the future we will rely on federal grants.
Thank you, Patrick. Diane, does that respond to your question?
Yes, one other question, if I may. Who is going to next year apply, be the person to apply for those grants?
I think Michael and I will do it.
Yeah, and I would say we would also use our, the consultant that we use this year to assist us in reviewing the grant application.
Okay.
Okay, folks, we're going to move into the Baby Town Meeting that is an annual occurrence. Basically, for everybody's information, every article that is brought before the annual town meeting or special town meeting that deals with appropriation of borrowing of money, the creation of debt, or disposal of property of the town is referred by the selectmen to the Finance Committee for approval or disapproval, and that is the purpose of the Baby Town Meeting. We deal with financial articles. We do not deal with non-monetary articles or warrants. Those will be brought up at the actual town meeting. What, excuse me, just one moment, please. What I would like to do is that we are going to work on a three-section base, a multiple-section basis. The first will be discussion of the fiscal year '22 operating budget. And after Steve Schatz discusses the budget, we will take open questions from anybody who is participating. And then we will deal with the monetary articles, those that are funded by community preservation monies, free cash, and debt. And after each section, the community preservation articles, the free cash articles, and the debt-funded articles, we will take questions. That would be the approach to the Baby Town Meeting.
Jay?
Yes, Bill, Jim?
We have, we have not voted on the motion for the $70,000.
I'm sorry, forgive me. We got a little distracted. Thank you very much, Jim. May we, we have a motion from Jim, a second from myself. Let's have a roll call vote. Jim?
Hi.
Pam Boudreau?
Hi.
Neil?
Hi.
Diane?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Jim, thank you very much. That's one of the reasons that I like to, I like to finish the thought before we start to inject a lot of different materials. Moving on, just by way of a little background, for everybody's information, fiscal year 2020, the financial operating results were satisfactory. There was a decrease for 2020 in the tax rate from, was 9.87, which was a decrease of 26 cents from fiscal year 2019. There was a certified balance of free cash for that period, 2.454 million. And basically, for that period, $69,640 were used for roof repairs on Eaton Court, $50,000 for development of a plan to restore the Civil War monument, and a stabilization fund to deal with the possible ramifications of COVID-19 was also developed. And that period of time also saw a capital assessment of 2.856 million for the Berkshire Hill School, the operating budget for the Berkshire Hill School, the Berkshire Hill School capital assessment of 83,986. A planning board and zoning consultant was approved of 40,000. Avrak Bridge repair, 150,000 will be moving in the future on the second Avrak Bridge. And water and sewer utilities relocation, 280,000. Most of you have seen that that project who drive by there is in fact completed. And basically, we look forward, the Finance Committee, to working with and have been working with, and in the future will work closely with Michael Canales, with our treasurer, Erica Rolson. And we are also in the process of recruiting for an accountant. Hopefully, that may be resolved by the time of the annual town meeting. And we welcome a close working relationship with Chair McCaffrey and the Select Board. So basically, we thank the Department Heads and Michael for their efforts and the Select Board on development of FY22 budget. FY22 budget, we're going to get into the details of it. And again, questions after we, after we finish the discussion. We're talking about $10,713,167, an increase of about 1.5%. Steve Schatz, would you take us through the operating budget, please?
Oh, thank you, Jay. Thank you for all of your efforts in keeping us well organized and in coordinating the efforts of this, the Finance Committee during this rather unusual period with the town administrator as well as with the Select Board. So, Michael, you're going to get everything up on the screen here shortly?
Michael?
Have we lost him? He's going to do a screen sharing to get the budget up. Well, let me start.
I just threw it up to Steve.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
I have it here in front of me, Mike. And I don't, I don't propose to go through every line item of this budget any more so than I did last year or others before me have done. I think that the highlights of the budget. How are we doing here now? Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
All right. So in the first category, under general government, if you go to the bottom, you'll see that there is a total of $1,263,000, which represents a decrease of $8,454 in the general government budget. There are some shifts of line items, you know, primarily related to a reduction of some selectmen's expenses, increases in anticipated salaries for an accountant, town accountant, that is, and a few other expenses. But the net result is that the general government budget decreases by approximately $8,500. I might point out, right at the very beginning, when you go to the end of this Article IV budget, you will see that the overall budget has increased approximately $150,000, which represents an increase from FY21 of less than 1.5%. So going on from there, public safety. The public safety budget, as you will see at the bottom, has increased by $17,600. I'm using rounded numbers here. Some of this relates to increases in police department expenses, some fire department expenses. There is a happy decrease in our ambulance service expenses. But no one, and I just say, I say that as a caveat and one that Jay, where he going through this himself, well, I would say the same thing. Don't be assured that we will have a decrease next year. This is a, an ongoing, very difficult service to understand, and it's going to require considerable effort on the part of the town to figure this out in the future. So, and then we go to the education budget and the.
I'm sorry. Just to check one point under public safety. We did increase the salary line for volunteers. We increased the hourly stipend so that we could incentivize recruitment of more volunteer firemen. And that, that's important for the towns to know.
So we then go on to the education budget, which, as you can see, has pushed our budget more so than any other expense in the, in Article IV. And there was a. Hello?
You there?
I'm here, but there's some background noise.
Go ahead.
As you can see, there is an increase in the education budget of $217,652. That is also a. You know, it's, our education budget is also an ongoing process and ongoing work that we hope to see some changes in over the course of the next two years if the discussions to merge the two school districts in this part of Berkshire County come to fruition. But for the moment, education expenses go up and we pay our share of it, which I think is 18%, Mike? I don't, I don't recall the exact number. It's 18 to 22% of the education budget. Next, we go to Public Works and Facilities, and you'll see a significant change. And that's because we, in the $75,000 decrease at the beginning, because we no longer, or at least this year, we will not be funding the position of a highway superintendent. There are some other smaller decreases in expenditures and one increase in the salary for the operation supervision of the compact or the transfer station. This, in any event, results in a decrease in that line item of approximately $74,000. Now, again, a caveat. The caveat, as you will hear later on, is that the savings that have been achieved in this area will be, will be spent, in effect, for other purposes. And there are special articles, there's special article to deal with that later on. So it's, it appears that there is a savings, but we're going to turn around and use it elsewhere. I won't take away anybody's thunder in describing that one. So then we go on to human services. And human services has one significant change. Two, actually, I take that back. If you look at the Health Officer, Tritown Health, Tritown Health, for those of you on this call who don't know, is the oldest shared services program in Berkshire County. It dates back to, I believe, 1927, and it's essentially a health department for Leveletts and Stockbridge. The VNA line item just below it is decreased. In fact, it's eliminated because the VNA went out of business, and the VNA services are now being provided by Tritown. And so the $7,719 savings has gone up into the Tritown line item. The Council on Aging Salaries have been reduced. There's been a reorganization, I should say, of the way in which other services are being provided in a cooperative program with, is it Great Barrington, Michael?
Yes, Great Barrington.
Yeah, Great Barrington. And in fact, the van which the town meeting authorized the purchase of two years ago.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Diane.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Has now been contributed, if you will, as our share of the expenses for running this council program for the next three years. But eventually, the, the cost of that program will catch up to us after that three-year period. So the decrease of $7,109 is, you know, good news for this year. But again, no one should think that this is going to be a number which will hold three years from now. Now we go to culture and recreation. And I think what you see here is relatively straightforward. The Select Board approved and we recommended approval of an increase in expenses for the library. There were decreases in salaries for Parks and Recreation Commission and an increase in expenses to Ford Parks and Recreation to provide better care of the town beach. That resulted in an increase in, in that budget of approximately $7,000. The debt service component of the budget is what it is. I mean, it's a, it shows a decrease of about $25,000, and that decrease is as a result of the retirement of debt. There'll be more discussion about that as we go through some of the special articles. And suffice to say that the goal, the stated goal of the town has always been to maintain, you know, fairly healthy, consistent debt levels. And I think this, this budget demonstrates that. And we commend, again, the town administrator as well as the Select Board for this kind of a budget. So then we get to employee benefits. Once again, this year, at least in the, in the budget, we are not funding the, what are called other post-employment benefits. This is a, started seven or eight years ago, I believe. Maybe 10 years ago, we started funding the liability, the actuarial liability for employee, retired employee health benefits. We are somewhere around 87 or 88% of the actuarial total that we need to fully fund this trust fund.
$3 million is the amount.
Is it three now?
Yeah.
We're among the perhaps two or three communities in Berkshire County who are on their way to fully funding this liability. And for that, we, I say this every year, we, we have, we have to thank Jay's predecessor, Gene Rousseau, who really was insistent that this be done. The, one line item in here that I think requires a little bit of explanation because it tends to come up every year, and that's the so-called undesignedated compensation. Some years ago, two or three employees, I believe there were highway, two highway employees, rather, retired early and collected their sick pay, vacation pay, I can't remember what else it was. And we had not, we had not budgeted for that kind of an expense. And there was a decision made in that year to begin funding that, that liability. So that's what that is. It's not for an undesignedated employee. It's, it's for the unexpected expected. So that's where we are on our employee benefits, which essentially are the same, they're unchanged from the prior year. Town insurance has gone up, and I think that a friend of Bykowsky, who was very sensitive to insurance issues, having spent a lifetime dealing with that, would tell us that we should expect more increases in insurance as we have more natural events which occur, which raise liabilities and push insurance expenses on them. So that's, and we have virtually no control over that. We can bid it, we do bid it, in fact. But anyone who owns property understands this.
If I might, Steve, I'd like to add just a couple of quick points. On the increase, for everybody's information, of the education, the, the operating budget, the tuition has increased because of reductions in state funding. And also, we've had reductions in, in what we call Chapter 71 transportation funding. And Steve did go through the reduction in debt. And one of the topics that the Finance Committee will take up after the annual town meeting is the prospects of restructuring debt and whether there is an incentive based on, based on decreased interest rates for borrowing. But we'll, we'll see where that takes us. Before I ask for questions, anything else, Steve?
Okay, I just, to that point, I don't think anyone should get up there much of an expectation that we're going to see much savings in renegotiating or refunding because the issuance costs for these, for these debt issues is so high that they tend to eat up any benefits that you get. So it's worth looking at, and it's worth looking at every year. But there should not be an expectation that we're going to save a great deal of money in that, in that arena.
I'm going to ask for questions at this point. Does, does anybody? Does anybody have any questions relative to Steve's presentation? Okay, there being none, just FYI. The Select Board has, in fact, approved this proposed budget, and the Finance Committee has also recommended approval of the budget, and it will come up for vote at the annual town meeting on the 12th. So that's where we are relative to, to the, to the operating budget. Moving on, we have a number of articles that are financially related. The first section are those that will be funded with community preservation monies. And I'm going to call on, going to call on. And I'm going to call on, going to call on Bill Boat to take us through these articles, specifically starting off with article number seven. Bill?
Thanks, Jay. What about articles five and six? Were those covered by Steve?
Five, five and six were the Berkshire Hills Regional School District. That's the operating budget and the capital budget. That was incorporated into Steve's presentation. And they were, those two were in fact approved by the select board and the finance committee.
Okay, I didn't know whether we had to go through those again.
No, we we don't.
Okay, well, thank you. There are a number of community preservation committee recommendations, starting with articles. And I will read them. Article seven, to see if the town will vote is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance the sum of thirty four thousand dollars for community housing purposes to be used by the Stockbridge Housing Authority, Heaton Court, for replacement of wood siding on buildings A, C, D, E, F, and G, or to take any other action in relation there to. Article eight, to see if the town will vote is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of five thousand dollars for historic resources purposes to be used by the Stockbridge Housing Authority for restoration of the sign at Heaton Court, or take any other action in relation there to.
It was blown down in a storm, just FYI.
Article nine, to see if the town will vote is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars for historic resources purposes to be used by Naumkeg for the preservation of the Frederick McMonney's Young Fawn and Heron Bronze Sculpture, or take any other action in relation there to. Article ten, to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of ten thousand dollars for historic resources purposes to be used by the Stockbridge Library for the replacement of the H V A C system in the archives, or take any other action in relation there to. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for historic resources purposes to be used by the Berkshire Theater Festival for the replacement of siding and trim on the Melon Barn, or take any other action in relation there to. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance for open space and recreation purposes, the sum of eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to be used by the Friends of Gould Meadows for work at Gould Meadows to preserve open space by removing invasive species, improve recreational walkways and tree work, or take any other action in relation there to. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of sixty thousand dollars for historic resources purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for restoration of the Civil War Monument, provided that thirty thousand dollars is appropriated from the Historic Preservation Reserve Fund and thirty thousand dollars shall be appropriated from the Community Preservation Anticipated Annual Revenues, or take any other action in relation there to. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of twenty five thousand dollars for historic resources purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for the restoration of the concrete basin of the Cat and Dog Fountain, or take any other action in relation there to. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance the sum of five thousand dollars for historic resources purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for the restoration of the concrete trough of the horse watering trough, or take any other action in relation there to. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance for historic resources purposes, the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be used by the Stockbridge Muncie Community for the G I S mapping deed restriction and preparation for the historic listing for the Stockbridge Muncie Community Assessment of the field arboretum, or to take any other action in relation there to. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of seventy five thousand dollars for community housing purposes to be used by Pine Woods for reconstruction of the driveway, or take any other action in relation there to. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of thirty three thousand dollars for community housing purposes to be used by Riverbrook for the installation of an ADA compliant bathroom and elevator, or take any other action in relation therefore, there to. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of seventeen thousand dollars for historic per, resources purposes to be used by Riverbrook for the installation of a sprinkler system, or take any other action in relation there to. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for community housing purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for the funding of a Stockbridge Housing Trust, provided, however, that such appropriation shall be contingent on the development and approval by town meeting of a Stockbridge Housing Trust, or take any other action in relation there to. Article twenty one, to see if the town will vote as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund a sum of ten thousand dollars for the fiscal year twenty two CPC, Community Preservation Committee Administrative Budget, or to take any other action in relation there to. Article twenty two, to see if the town will vote is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act to reserve to the Historic Resources Reserve, the Affordable Housing Reserve, and the Open Space Reserve from Community Preservation Anticipated Annual Revenues, the minimum amounts required by M G L C forty four B S six, or take any other action in relation there to.
That was the, what Bill presented was the first section of the articles that are funded by community preservation monies. Are there any comments or questions from any of the participants at the meeting on any of these articles?
I have one, if I may.
Yes, Diane.
Is there, I assume the Commonwealth does contribute some monies. Do we know what that amount is?
Michael, do you know the contribution, the percentages?
The state, last year, we received, it was between our funds and the rest was, I believe, two hundred and forty something thousand. Let me see if I can double check that to make sure.
Just what the state gives.
Just what the state.
Yeah. I know it gets to be less and less.
We we have to and we have to remember that the town originally voted participation in community preservation matters and to participate on a contributory basis with contributions from the state. So this was a town meeting vote a number of years ago.
Right.
Okay, so that that's
I'm getting that off the cherry sheet from the state.
I'm just curious.
Yep, just had to open a different document. Sorry, did not have it open.
Oh. If it's too much trouble, I'll leave it alone.
Any, any other questions relative to community preservation? Peter, you need to unmute. Peter Strauss?
Two hundred and forty eight thousand, it looks for the Community Preservation Fund.
From the state.
Yes, I I'm not a hundred percent if that's the state or a combination of the state and the town.
Oh.
I will try to get that answer to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on community preservation articles?
So in article sixteen, where it says G I S, shouldn't that be G P S? And then more generally, all of these articles have end with or take any other action in relation there to. And what I'm wondering is just how restrictive that italicized phrase is.
So the G I S is G I S. So that's G I S mapping. And or take any any other action relation to, that would be approved by the moderator if people were to make tried to amend any of the articles. So that would really be under control of the moderator as far as what can be done within that article.
Okay, Peter?
Well, it doesn't tell me how free, if it's left unamended, it doesn't tell me how free it leaves the folks who get the money.
Oh, it doesn't affect, that's just the allowance at town meeting to take on any other action in relation to. The motions themselves will state that that language will vanish once the motion is made on the floor of town meeting.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions relative to this section of the articles? There being none, we're going to move on to article number twenty three. These, the next number of articles are going to be funded by free cash. Free cash, everybody will recall, represents the town's remaining unrestricted funds from its operations of a previous fiscal year. And these brought up on an article to be approved at town meeting. The articles that you heard on the CPC were proposed and approved by the select board as well as the finance committee. So we will go through the free cash proposed articles also, which have been proposed by, approved by the select board and the finance committee. And we'll take questions after we complete those. Bill?
Article twenty three, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars from available certified free cash for the purpose of contracting services to provide part time professional planning assistance to the Town of Stockbridge Planning Board, or take any other action in relation there to. Article twenty four, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of thirty five thousand dollars from available certified free cash for the purpose of water testing and consultants for the Stockbridge Bowl, or take any other action in relation there to. Article twenty five, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars from available certified free cash for the purpose of funding the other post retirement benefit, O P E B, trust, or take any other action in relation there to.
Just an aside on that, Bill, this is a reduction from prior year's funding, which is supported by our actuaries. So we, we have a very substantial amount of money put aside, as Steve has said. Go ahead.
Article twenty six, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of thirty five thousand dollars from available certified free cash to be added to the amounts appropriated under article twenty four of the annual town meeting of May twentieth, twenty thirteen. Article twenty two of the annual town meeting of May nineteenth, twenty fourteen. Article thirty six of the annual town meeting of May eighteenth, twenty fifteen. Article twenty five of the annual town town meeting of May sixteen, twenty sixteen. Article twenty of the annual town meeting of May fifth, twenty seventeen. Article twenty one of the annual town meeting of May twenty first, twenty eighteen. And article fourteen of the annual town meeting of May twenty, twenty nineteen for costs associated with negotiations for the Rest of River Project along with Pittsfield, Lennox, Lee, Great Barrington, and Sheffield regarding the removal of PCBs in the Husatonic River, or to take any other action in relation there to. Article twenty seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of seventy thousand dollars from available certified free cash for the purpose of tree monitoring and treatment within Ice Glen, or take any other action in relation there to.
As you recall, was approved just prior to our getting involved this evening with the baby town meeting by the finance committee. And it was approved prior to that by the select board. Yes, Bill?
Article twenty eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of eight thousand dollars from available certified free cash for the purpose of supporting the work of the Regional School District Planning Board in its study of the financial and educational advisability of options for consolidating the Southern Berkshire Regional School District and the Berkshire Hills Regional School District, or take any other action relative there to. Article twenty nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of ninety five thousand dollars from available certified free cash for the purpose of site maintenance and upgrades to the town's tennis and basketball courts, or to take any other action in relation there to. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars from available certified free cash for the purpose of hiring lighting consultants for upgrading of town streetlights, or take any other action in relation there to. Article thirty one, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars from available certified free cash to add to the amount appropriated for bridge and road projects under article one at the January twenty third, twenty seventeen special town meeting for the purpose of fully funding the Larry Wog Bridge project. Take any other action in relation there to.
Bill, Michael, would you make just some additional comments on that? On on what we're doing with the Larry Wog Bridge?
Sure. So two weeks ago, we did contract with Maximilian to complete the Larry Wog Bridge. The finance committee and select board both approved reserve account transfers to have a much, have enough funds available to contract. But right now, we have no funds available if any change orders do arise during the construction phase. So we are asking that in this article to have ten percent set aside in case there are any change orders that affect the bridge construction.
And the completion date is October thirty one, the proposed date.
That is correct.
Go ahead, Bill.
Article thirty two, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars from the cemetery trust fund for the purpose of hiring consultants to study and evaluate the restoration of old stones within the cemetery, or take any other action in relation there to. Article thirty three, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of twelve thousand dollars from available sewer available surplus for the purpose of funding an underground camera system, or take any other action in relation there to. Article thirty four, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of thirty eight thousand dollars from available water operations reserve funds for the purpose of funding the Tuckerman Bridge Water Main Engineering, or take any other action in relation there to. Article thirty five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer the sum of three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars from available water operations from available Water Operations Reserve Funds for the purpose of funding the inspection and cleaning of the Quiet Knoll Water Storage Tank, or take any other action in relation there to. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $97,717 from sewer available surplus to provide in fiscal year twenty twenty-one a portion of the cost of the debt service payment, principal and interest of the sewer system expansion and update project authorized in Article three of the special town meeting of April first, two thousand and two, or to take any other action in relation there to. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $96,918 from sewer available surplus to provide for a portion of the cost of the debt service payment, principal and interest of the sewer system expansion and update project authorized by Article three of the special town meeting of April first, two thousand and two, or to take any other action in relation there to.
This represents the conclusion of our second section of articles, those funded by free cash. Does any, do any of the participants have any questions or comments relative to Bill Boat's presentation?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Steve.
Articles seven through thirty-seven, I think it's worth noting, do not affect the tax levy. These, this funding comes from a variety of special funds, excuse me, and although they have to be appropriated at town meeting and paid for by these, from these funds, they will not affect the tax levy.
Are there, and, and, and I did mention in the beginning, Steve, free cash is a carryover from the prior fiscal period revenues. So, are there any other comments from any of our participants relative to this section? There being none, we have three more articles that will be, that are proposed to be funded by issuing bonds, notes, and debt. Bill, you want to take us through those?
Sure. Thirty-eight, to appropriate a sum of $600,000 to pay costs of restoring the Chime Tower and all incidental and related costs to be spent under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, the money so appropriated to be raised by borrowing under the authority of GLC forty-four, section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue bonds or notes for this purpose. And further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issue of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with GLC forty-four, section twenty, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, or take any other action relative there to.
Just one point on that, Bill. The proposal here that will be made to the town is that this, this would be a twenty-year debt issue, bonds or notes. We do engage a consultant to help us with this in prior years. Standard and Poor Bond Rating is double A plus. We have not borrowed funds for several years, and that, that is a very impressive record. And Steve Schatz did mention in the budget that our debt structure is beginning to fall off. So, so this, 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 I guess, would start in twenty twenty-two, Michael, or twenty-three? Funding for this?
We would borrow in the next probably six months, the funds and the first payment would actually hit us in twenty twenty-three when we have other debt falling off.
Right. Go ahead, Bill. Article thirty-nine.
Article thirty-nine, to appropriate a sum of $145,000 to pay costs of purchasing a highway department truck with plow and sander and all incidental and related costs to be spent under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, the money so appropriated to be raised by borrowing under the authority of GLC forty-four, section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue bonds or notes for this purpose. And further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with GLC forty-four, section twenty, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, or take any other action relative there to.
The point on this one, this would be a five-year note or bond. And basically, the thought here is that every, every year on a, on a cyclical basis will start to replace our aging, deteriorating equipment. And this is, this is part of our five-year capital budgeting program. So that's the thought on this one. And the last one, Bill?
Article forty, to appropriate a sum of $720,000 to pay costs of replacing the Park Street Pump Station and all incidental and related costs to be spent under the direction of the Stockbridge Water and Sewer Commission, the money so appropriated to be raised by borrowing with principal and interest payments in the first instance from the Sewer Operations Reserve Fund under the authority of GLC forty-four, section eight, five, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue bonds or notes for this purpose. And further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with GLC forty-four, section twenty, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, or to take any other action relative there to.
Bill, thank you very much. That again would be the Park Street Pump Station, a twenty-year bond or note as we had previously discussed. Now that is the third and final section of the financially oriented articles for, that will come for approval before the annual town meeting. Does anybody have any questions relative to the three that we have mentioned?
Jay, do you feel that Article forty-four is also financially oriented?
Article forty-four?
Yeah, it's the one of
We, we passed Article forty-four.
No, it has to do with raising the, this, the room excise tax to six percent.
No, that has not come before our committee.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments on anything that we've discussed thus far? Is there any further business to be brought before this baby town meeting? Before we adjourn the meeting, we, a reminder that June twelfth, the meeting will be held in the basketball and tennis courts outside of the parking lot at Town Hall. The rain date is the thirteenth, Saturday, which will be indoors in the gym, which is, the venue has been approved by the governor. And, Michael, what time, what time is the?
No, the, because of the governor's order changed, so the twelfth will be the meeting either indoor or outdoor. Right now, it's scheduled for outdoor on the twelfth.
Right.
If due to rain, we will just simply move it inside on the twelfth. So it will be the twelfth regardless.
Any other questions, folks?
Will there be broadcast?
Yes.
That's Steve Boons from CTSB TV.
I guess it will, it will be live on CTSB.
Yes. Anything else? I therefore move at seven twenty-nine adjournment of the meeting, and we thank you all for participating on this stormy evening. Thanks again, everybody. Have a good evening.
Nice job, Jay.